Good evening, welcome to early work session of the Highland Village City Council. Today is Thursday, April 11th. The meeting is called to order at five o'clock sharp, or no, six o'clock sharp. The clock is an hour off. Let the record show, all council members are present. We'll start off with a discussion on speed limits. And City Manager Paul Stevens is gonna start.
Thank you Mayor, and hopefully, we've had this discussion, of course, quite a bit lately. Maybe we get some type of resolution. So we'll see how that goes.
Why are you looking at me?
Did I look at you?
I'm kidding.
Not you.
It's the glare in the lights.
I apologize, this worked in rehearsal. She's camp. So, just a little bit of summation of where we've been. Of course, we've had a lot of discussion about the eighty-fifth percentile, and how that works. That's a long-standing method to establish speed limits. And we have done speed studies in our neighborhoods, generally thirty miles per hour below is what we see. Now, the Lakeside, Hillside area, it ranges from anywhere from twenty-four to twenty-eight miles per hour. And looking at the thirty mile per hour speed limit citywide, there's really, does it appear to be a huge speeding problem? Of course, you've always got a handful of people that aren't gonna speed. There's always that issue. Hey, did you fix that by doing that, or are you just gonna be my clicker?
Try it again, see if it works.
Do I need to point it up, or cross?
Just point it to Ken and... You're playing off his glasses.
Well, might work. So with some of the discussion, there has always a sentiment that a thirty mile per hour speed limit is just too fast, considering our neighborhoods where you've got pedestrians, bicyclists, and children sharing the roads. In fact, I think some of the residents on Lakeside, I didn't even mention, they had done a little speed limit test themselves, tried to guess the speed of the cars, and they were thinking it was going faster, and generally, it was thirty miles per hour. So the eighty-fifth percentile, one thing that it really doesn't do is take into consideration multimodal activity, meaning the bicycles, the walkers, everybody else, the availability of sidewalks, topography, and other factors. And we have seen over the past several years, a move to lower speed limits in residential areas. In fact, Flower Mountain, Corinth, have lowered theirs to twenty-five miles per hour. I will say Corinth, after they've done it, they've gone back and raised some back up to thirty, but generally, the residential areas are twenty-five miles per hour.
Why did they go back?
I think after a little bit of work on that, some of those were, I'm not sure if you'd call it a collector, but it was really more than just a residential street. So they felt thirty would be an adequate speed limit for that. And we do, we have a large amount of walkers, runners, and bicyclists, and of course, among those are children. We talked about the traffic accidents in the neighborhoods, those are really minimal. And fortunately, we haven't had really a proportion of pedestrian accidents. However, there does seem to be public support for lowering the speed limit to make our streets even safer than they already are.
That anecdotal.
That is anecdotal. Sorry, Chief. So in our past discussions, we have not reached consensus on lowering the speed limit to twenty-five miles per hour. But with the discussions surrounding Lakeside and Hillside, if council decided to go this way, this could be a good pilot project to try the twenty-five miles per hour. And this could be done by council action, of course, it would take an ordinance to adopt that, or if we wanted to survey the neighborhood to see how people feel. If, I'm sorry.
If we're gonna be targeted, would it be a possibility of doing not just the speed limit, but also the stop signs, as we were discussing last time? So basically, looking at multiple ways of controlling the traffic, but doing it on a targeted basis?
It could be, yeah, I'd sorta do that.
I would also suggest two pilots in two different areas. So you do one on Lakeside, and you do one maybe in Sean's neighborhood. I wasn't gonna say my neighborhood.
We're gonna throw Armadillos on here with speed bumps.
No, we won't put speed bumps, but maybe two different distinct neighborhoods where we get a good cross-section.
I did, when we talked about this last week, I did suggest Tartan and Silverthorne as part of the pilot as well. So I thought that would be a good...
They have sidewalks there, though, would it make sense to do one with sidewalks and one without? Do they have sidewalks?
But there, I have gotten a number of emails from people that live on Tartan specifically to complain about it. And it's mostly because it becomes a much narrower street because of all the parking.
Well, and I think that's the key right there, because if you're coming down Silverthorne, Silverthorne's a wide street. I'll just use my name, it's a wide street. And it's a straight shot, and you can pretty much see everything that's going on. But then you get on the tighter streets, some of the streets on the infill of the neighborhood, which is very true in every neighborhood in our city, they're tighter. And so that thirty miles an hour through there, I mean, it feels like it's going real fast. So I would suggest a pilot in two neighborhoods.
In this neighborhood here, in particular, there's three hundred and seventy-nine homes. So that includes all the homes on Lakeside, Hillside, plus all of the cul-de-sacs and the other streets that come off of that. It's a contained neighborhood. You've gotta get in on Lakeside or Hillside, so there's no confusion there. Well, here's a picture over right here. If you look at that bottom left, there's Highland Shores, and you can see Hillside to the right, Lakeside to the left, and it makes a big circle with all the connecting streets. So, very well-contained, no confusion as far as where a speed limit would change from twenty-five to thirty, or anything like that.
Mr. Stevens, is it signed now as thirty miles an hour anywhere?
It is not. Of course, the primeface speed limit is thirty miles per hour, and Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe you said there are no thirty mile private speed limits.
There are no speed limit signs on that entire peninsula.
So there would be new twenty-five mile an hour speed limit signs?
There would be new, yeah, and we'll get to that in just a second. In full disclosure, I do live in this neighborhood. I drive Hillside multiple times a day, Lakeside multiple times a week. My driving habits, I don't feel comfortable going thirty miles per hour on any section of that area. Because of the hills, because of the terrain, because of so many walkers on there. In fact, I've been a little more conscious lately, just kinda looking at my speed limit. There's one area on Hillside, I kinda hit twenty-eight, and by the time I get to that, there's a hill up ahead of me, so you slow down again.
That being of the North Shore area, that's the highest point up there?
Yes, yeah. Very high.
And that's actually the only, that's actually the only stop sign that's on the road. It's not at North Shore, though, it's...
There's a stop sign, as far as the loop goes, there's one on Lake Creek in Hillside. Yeah, and that's kind of a peak right there, too, where there is a stop sign.
Get back up the slide.
Sure. I don't know why I'm holding this stuff.
So Chief, which intersection was the one that you were talking about people blow through?
Put a stop sign at.
Yeah, Lake Breeze, 'cause I drove through there and I couldn't find it.
It's on Hillside, Lake Breeze. It's right...
Sparking Hillside, Lakeside.
Where is that on this?
Top left.
I need a zoom in for that.
That's right. And the current stop sign is all the way back here.
Lake Breeze, and it's just on Lake Breeze?
Yeah.
It's about...
Yeah, right. Oh, it's time.
Three o'clock.
Okay. Oh, three o'clock, so you're over here. Okay, yeah.
How about a three-way?
Creek is the word it says.
It's a three-way stop sign, yeah.
But there's only... They're all gonna be three-way.
Well, no, 'cause what we've established, Lakeside and Lake Breeze is just two.
Lake Breeze is the only intersection that...
There's a four-way.
The four-way.
Or the possibility of one.
There's a half a mile from Island Shores to North Shore, both sides. So it's roughly a miles loop, real close to it.
So Paul, how do you know that a pilot program works of this nature?
I don't, that's why it's a pilot program.
I know, but how do we determine the success or failures where I'm going?
You know, Scott had put out the monitors a while back before we had the first discussion. I think after this would be in place for a while, you would go back and monitor that again.
Well, but I think you made a very good point. It's not that we have violations of people exceeding the speed limit. You've made a very poignant point. You drive Hillside, you feel that thirty miles an hour is too fast. That's my whole argument, is that the math, the stats show that people aren't speeding, the whole premise is, is it thirty miles an hour is too fast?
It's the characteristics of the road, I think.
I think it's all around. I'll take you through, I'll take you through my neighborhood, and on Lockmore, Braymore, you don't...
I was over there today.
You don't wanna go thirty miles an hour.
Exactly.
But there are people that do.
But I mean, the average is already twenty-four on Hillside, Lakeside. You know, I mean, that's what it is today without doing anything. Are we trying to get it down to twenty by lowering the speed limit? Hoping people are gonna go low.
But I think...
I don't think you'll see that, I think you'll find more people exceeding that.
Yeah, what you'll end up doing is causing people to speed.
Right.
Then that's why we have a police department.
Exactly, and I think, you know, when we talk about, we talk about the traffic study, the thing that the chief has said repeatedly is that, you know, the eighty-fifth percentile, that's not eighty-fifth percentile people, eighty-five percent of people are driving the speed limit. Eighty-five percent are driving within the tolerable limit of the speed limit. So that's above the speed limit. So you could make the case that we have a lot of people that are exceeding the speed limit, they're just not exceeding enough to where anybody wants to write them a ticket.
Right.
So...
So Mayor, just to add to that, it's a great discussion on that, but we set the tolerance on the equipment. So if you wanna move the equipment from thirty for the eighty-five percentile, you change that in your reading.
Sure, sure.
Inside where that's at.
Well, when y'all are, if you have an officer that's out on patrol and he parks his car at one of these, you know, at an intersection on the street somewhere, you know, just to do radar, he's got discretion how far above thirty he's willing to accept before he pulls somebody over. And that's what that eighty-fifth percentile really comes down to, is what the officer's discretion is, right?
How many stop signs do we have in this entire neighborhood?
Of course, along the loop there, you just have the one.
The side streets are...
Yeah, the side streets are all...
The only reason I ask is, our neighborhood, where we have a hundred and sixty-three homes, we have, I think, seven stop signs. We have stop signs everywhere. So I was just kinda comparing nearly four hundred homes, almost twice as many, how many stop signs they have here. Why do we have so many, you know, there are fewer here?
I think it's based upon the number of streets, right, Scott? Intersections.
Intersections, yeah.
Just going through real quick, I'm counting nine, and then I'm probably missing something there.
Wow, you have good eyes seeing from there.
From this distance, I do, if I stand right in front of it, I can see it.
There's only a couple of spots, though, where there are stop signs that are stopping traffic from each direct, quote-unquote, "each direction." You have a three-way stop at, was it Lake Creek and Hillside? And then there's not another one until you get up to Lakeside and Lake Breeze, but that's only the one side, right? That's only the one side that you're stopping.
Just quickly looking at it, I'd say at least twenty-two.
I would bet you, Paul, if you polled these three hundred and seventy-nine residents, they would say thirty miles an hour is too fast. And I would, I'd bet you a hundred bucks right now that a majority of those people would say it's too fast. And then I'll pull you over into my neighborhood, and I'll double down on you. And you're gonna say, you're gonna hear the majority of those people say it's too fast.
And when I talk to people, just in conversation, you know, and this issue comes up, I've yet to tell, I've yet to hear from anybody that says that, you know, that the speed limits are curbing people from driving too fast.
And that same person is probably driving thirty miles an hour in their own neighborhood. So, I mean, Chief, can I ask you a question? How many officers do we have on patrol during the day shift?
In a perfect world?
No, today, right now. Four. Four officers, so how long would you ask an officer to sit at Lake Breeze?
Fifteen to forty-five minutes max is about all we can afford, before they would have to call for another call for service.
Okay.
Unless we had a specialized assignment or unit, which, again, in pilot programs or things like that, there would have to be some additional coverage to, well, when we work them in to measure things, or we'll bring them in after we measured them and they weren't being done correctly, then we'd have to bring extra resources in for those neighbors.
Or if you want to, and I'm not advocating technology, but there is technology out there where you can hide a camera, and if you're speeding, it clicks ya, and you get a ticket. And you don't have to have a...
Not anymore.
Not anymore.
No, it's been out.
That went the way of the red light camera.
Do we have any of the little, small portable speed radar flashes? I know we got the ones on the trailer.
That's it.
'Cause I'm thinking...
Trailers, but the trailers don't, our trailers actually don't capture that.
I'm just thinking, you know, what you're trying to do is control speed, okay? Put something up that, you know, flashes, oh, you're coming too fast. Okay, coming down that hill, so it just reminds people what they're doing.
They make the wall, they make telephone units, oh, I'm sorry, pole-mounted units, they make the trailers. They're anywhere from four thousand dollars to eighty-five hundred.
Little units?
Solar units.
Solar panels, probably four, thirty-five hundred for a ground for them.
Yeah.
I mean, if everyone's doing twenty-four to twenty-six, that's the average right now. And ideally, you just wanna keep it at average, make that the eighty-five percent.
Well, and that supports the pilot program of lowering the speed limit to twenty-five, because then you'll get eighty-five percent, I'll be doing twenty-five.
Just out of curiosity, it sounds like you're not supportive of this, I'm curious as to what...
No, I don't see a problem, I don't see a problem. I hear anecdotal, okay? And I know two or three times ago that we talked about this, we had people coming in talking about, "Don't you dare lower the speed limit on Salmaire, don't you dare do this." I think it's a problem that has not presented itself. And I hate to see it when an animal gets struck. Okay? And we've been fortunate that we've never had a child, you know, injured. A lot of that comes back to personal accountability and responsibility. You don't let your kids play in the streets.
Well, I don't know that it's...
That's my, that's my whole...
I had an accident recently with a kid.
And I'm one of them.
I don't know, it's that somebody presented.
I think Paul had a couple more slides, too, that are really relevant to the conversation.
No, that's okay, no, it's a good discussion. One thing I will mention, too, and in looking at some of the other places in the U.S. where they've done speed limits, a big part of that is a PR push at the very beginning. And I think if you saw Flower Mountain, they did, if they got information out there well ahead of time, before they changed it to twenty-five miles per hour. So we did have some discussion about this. There is a split legal opinion on how state law requires a traffic study to lower the speed limit. There is a bill in the legislative selection right now that would clarify that. However, a lot of cities are just making this information that, that a speed limit below, the thirty miles per hour would be safer, so... And that's it right there, we've gone through this whole process of collecting information, and with looking at the other factors, that that could be sufficient to comply with state law requirements to say that it's unreasonably unsafe. And as I mentioned earlier, an ordinance would have to be adopted for that.
That's what I wanted to ask about, so in order to enact a pilot program, which pilot program by definition means not necessarily permanent, we would have to still, we'd have to do an ordinance to do that?
If you want, if you want an ordinance, yeah.
If we decide to go backwards...
If you were to write tickets on it, yes, sir.
That'd be correct.
And what is the process of adopting an ordinance?
Same as any other ordinance, same as any other process.
Comes through council for a vote.
Two times.
Okay.
Public hearings?
No public hearings apart.
No public hearings.
Okay. Okay.
Is there an alternative to reducing the speed? Is it stop signs? Is it speed bumps? Is it narrowing the roadway and adding a bike lane? Is there something else that we can do? We're all focused on speed, and I understand why, but I don't want us to get, go down this one trail and not consider anything else that might be a viable option for us.
Roundabouts. Well, we've talked about the speed bumps in the past, and every time we have, both police and fire.
And I understand.
And valid objections to it.
They are.
And your city attorney's not particularly fond of them either.
You're number three in that conversation.
I see it.
Back to the map real quick.
Can you go back?
I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Paul, can you tell if you can go back? So is there a stop sign at Lake, my eyes are not that clear, Lake Creek Drive? Is there a three-way stop there at Lake Creek and Hillside?
Yes.
There is a stop there.
That's correct.
And then there's another one, well, there's not a four-way basically at Lakeside, but we could add one. And then the rest, there's really no great opportunities for, right?
No, Lake Creek and Lakeside is your only four-way, true four-way intersection, even though it's short. And I'm not thrilled about it. If you're on Hillside and you're going west, and Hillside and Lakeside, it changes right there at that street. You're coming down a hill, you've got a curve, you've got some trees right there that would have to be trimmed up very high. Visibility would be tough when you're coming from the west.
Visibility is already bad, and when you're coming, if you're coming from the east going west, you can't talk to that hill, it's difficult.
But to see a stop sign...
In my mind, seeing a stop sign there, though, allows you the time to stop, analyze the situation before you proceed. So I see that as a benefit at that location, coming from the east going west. I drove it back home from the west to the east, but I got the same feeling. With the stop sign there, you're stopping traffic, giving them time to analyze the situation where they are.
I'm sorry, I'm getting some conflicting opinions, 'cause at one point, I'm hearing that a street like Tartan is dangerous, 'cause everybody's speeding down the street, and there's cars everywhere. But yet, they're telling us that it'll slow down if we put bike lanes and things in the lane of traffic. So which one is it? Is it the wide-open lanes where people are speeding, or is it the tight lanes where people are speeding? 'Cause it's so tight on Tartan, and it's not my neighborhood, I don't live there, but when I go down there, I certainly don't hog rear-end, because there's no way to do it.
I saw somebody just a little over a week ago that, coming down Tartan, that I...
And that's fine, so which one is it? Does it calm the traffic down, or does it make everybody speed up?
Well, let me clarify. I would say, and I would agree with the math, that the speed, that people aren't always exceeding thirty miles an hour. What I'm saying is thirty miles an hour is too fast. It needs to be twenty-five miles an hour, period. And when you go down and there's a lot of people that park, one thing that could alleviate it is if you said you can't park on the street, but we can't do that.
But that's opposite of what you guys are telling us about calming traffic. Things that calm the traffic.
My opinion is, and I think the industry would tell you, that if you're trying to calm traffic, you narrow lanes, you stack stuff on the road, because it forces people mentally to slow down, right? I see cars parked on the side of the road, they're slowing traffic down, 'cause I don't know what's chugging out from the middle of the cars.
But you're gonna get the outlier, that it doesn't...
Well, you're always gonna be...
How are we governing for the outlier?
No, in this case, I don't think we are. In this case, I don't think we're governing for the outlier.
But we're talking about reducing speed limits across the city.
Oh, no.
Granted, it's a pilot right now.
But that's the goal.
But the goal is to reduce it everywhere, because a dog was run over, unfortunately.
No, I don't, I don't think it's just a dog.
A resident that lived in the neighborhood, right?
I don't think it's the case with the dog.
Hold on, let me finish, one second. Anecdotally, I've driven downhill, side at Lakeside at night, I'm new to that neighborhood. I drove slow as hell, 'cause I was unfamiliar, right? It's the residents in these neighborhoods that I would say are the biggest offenders of distracted driving, 'cause they know where they're going, right?
They know where the stop sign is, they know where the blind spots are.
Your worry is hell, 'cause there's cars parked everywhere, there's, you're not familiar with that neighborhood, right? So again, all my discussions seem to be going to the same place. This is a neighborhood-oriented communication to slow your ass down when you're in your home neighborhood, right?
Well, but I think, I think...
We could start there, right? That's a pilot program we can do.
Yeah, you could.
Slow down.
But it's not, it's not just limited to this neighborhood. You can come into my neighborhood and drive down Greensprings, which is a street that's very similar, with the exception that it's pretty straight, but it's a lot of trees. There are people that here and there will park on the street, but not as many. And, you know, there are residents there that, they've talked to me, they've talked to Charlotte, you know, for years about how people drive too fast on Greensprings. Doubletree Boulevard or Road, that's a racetrack. You know, here's the issue I have. We get the study, every time this comes up, we get the study that says eighty-five or eighty-seven percent are within the tolerable limit, so there's not a speeding problem. But yet, just like I've said repeatedly, since I've been on council, the only thing that I get more email about than speeding is garbage. Speeding is the second most popular thing I get email about. And I get, I get that it's probably based upon the data, it's a perception problem. So why not do the pilot program, and we can have the data that supports and says the perception is wrong, or the perception's right, and that ends the discussion.
And that ends the discussion.
It says it's wrong.
We have the data. We've still got, well, we've still got residents that have heard the data for five flipping years, and are saying, "Your data's crap."
I'd love to see you ignore the data.
Then what's the opposition here of doing a frickin' pilot program?
The opposition, Tom, is if you lower a speed limit by five miles an hour, you gotta enforce the damn speed limit. We don't have the police officers to sit in this neighborhood and enforce twenty-five miles an hour. And what's gonna happen when these three hundred and fifty homeowners are getting ticketed for going thirty in a twenty-five?
We're going twenty-six.
And then the...
I'm just saying, it's...
I agree with Robert, and the question is, is it five miles an hour, or is it ten? Because five miles an hour isn't gonna make a difference, with the perception of somebody speeding down the road. And then it starts getting to be twenty mile an hour speed limit's ridiculous.
I drove twenty...
It's a school zone.
I went on that street at twenty, just to see, because that's what Mr. Bates wanted. I thought, "I'm gonna drive the whole street at twenty." I mean, I was asleep before I got to the top of the hill.
If we wanna do a pilot, let's do a pilot, but then we need solid data that everybody's gonna agree on, which is gonna be impossible, 'cause we can't all agree on data anymore, on the before and the after, right? We gotta measure this before, if we have that, fine. If we need data after, fine, but we also need to do enforcement.
That's what I've been saying for years.
But we don't have the people. Chief, I'm not gonna speak for you, but we can't... Chief, I'm not gonna speak for you, but we can't-
If we're gonna stick a guy out here for an hour a day, what- Nobody's saying you have to stick somebody out there an hour a day. What he said is that, what he said, what he said is, if you were going to stick somebody out there, that's the longest you could do. The reality is, we have four guys patrolling the, four people patrolling the city-
It's a big city.
During the day shift.
Four guys.
This is Highland Village, it's not downtown Dallas.
But if, but if you- Going back to the point of reducing, if you reduce it to twenty-five, to Robert's point, you don't have anybody enforcing it. What's the point of going to twenty-five? If nobody's gonna pay attention to it, you're still gonna have people driving twenty-four to twenty-eight, maybe thirty miles an hour, or more in the neighborhood.
I think the data, I think the data tell, I think the data tells us, if you, if your speed limit is thirty, and eighty-five percent of your people are within, are, are at or below thirty-seven, which is what the study has shown in the past, we lower it to twenty-five, well, then the majority of people will be at thirty or below, or thirty-two.
The average right now is twenty-four.
It's the average, that, that's the average. But again, the data says eighty-five percent of people are within the tolerable limit, which, as the chief has told us in years past, is at least seven, eight miles an hour above the posted speed limit.
Thirty, no.
Thirty, thirty.
It depends on what we set the dial for on there, okay?
You've told us in the past-
It's thirty.
When it's thirty miles an hour, eighty-five percent of people, you've told us in the past, at thirty miles an hour on a thirty mile an hour street, eighty-five percent of people are doing within the tolerable limit, and the tolerable limit was somewhere above thirty.
Make some words here, because again, whatever the machine was set at that time, we would have put the tolerable speed on there to determine what is the tolerable speed. If we're talking twenty-five, for lowering the speed limit to twenty-five, I'll tell you some inherent problems that haven't been discussed in this room. Is, you want a police officer writing you a ticket at twenty-eight miles an hour? Because we're at, under twenty-eight in that neighborhood right now. So, where, where does that level of enforcement go to say, to get you in compliance to the eighty-five percentile again? Or where do we wanna set the dial? What's it gonna take? How many tickets is it gonna take? It's, it's, it is very difficult, as you see that slide for the, of the, the citations and warnings in the city in a heat map, of a very generic heat map. It's difficult to sit in neighborhoods and, and, and write tickets.
Are we gonna see that?
Yes, it's coming. But it's very difficult to find a spot, first of all, in the streets to sit hard, and you can't sit anywhere, it's packed with cars. You have people coming in, and we have calls for service to deal with. You have the topography or, or geography area with the hills and places. So, you know, we've moved to, you know, other, in, in, not ingenious ideas, but other alternatives, that not the cookie cutter approach. If you need to bring stop signs in, and I don't advocate using stop signs to stop our slow traffic down, we use them for safety purposes. As in Mr. Martin's neighborhood, as we described, the, how people are cutting and running those corners. But, um, stop signs themselves are inherently dangerous too.
To capture, to capture somebody's speed limit when they're driving? Does a police officer have, have to be parked and holding the gun to get it? Or is it, can they get it while, oncoming and all that while they're moving?
Okay.
So, you don't have to park somebody for an hour?
Well, she wanted to run into the neighborhood, but typically, what we've done, I mean, any city I've been in, they're, they're focused, unless it's luck by random, driving through the neighborhood and they catch someone. It's usually based on a complaint from the neighborhood, where residents are saying, "We're having this issue." And then we set up and wait for people coming through there.
Moving radar is a little more difficult to prosecute as well, just because of the addition, it's, it's because of the additional. So, you gotta be, pretty much, most of your tickets are gonna be stationary radar.
It sounds to me like this discussion is moving towards more about capturing someone speeding than it is addressing the problem of the road itself and how we can manage speed on the road. Chief is not an advocate of stop signs, and we all understand the reasons why. The, the issue of lowering the speed limit throughout the city creates a lot of problems. We don't see in the data that there's an issue with speeding on any of these roads. So, we keep talking about it, we haven't made up our minds yet. Doesn't sound like we're gonna make up our minds tonight. But we also haven't explored, and I'm, I'm gonna keep coming back to it, what alternatives can we do that will satisfy the citizens of this community, keeping them safe, and also reducing the speed naturally? Is there something we can do? Nobody's presented anything. The only thing I've said is hang a stripe on it for sidewalks and forcing everybody to park on one side of the road. Scott, you tell me if that's helpful.
I would say stagger the parking on both sides, just have alternate neighbors park one side of it. Then you're stuck doing this, and you're slowing down. I mean, facetious, but-
From, from Scott's standpoint and the chief's standpoint, is that an option that we can consider?
Narrowing lanes is a-
Traffic calming option? Is this neighborhood parking on a street a problem? I don't think it is, right?
Just when there's parties.
Okay, yeah, because everybody's got pretty lengthy driveways, so it's not a Tartan situation.
There are cars on the streets, but yeah, by sudden, there was not as-
Completely, you know, all the way down the curb like Tartan.
Yeah. Go ahead, Scott. Parking on the street to, to control traffic.
Yeah, to, to Brian's point, you know, it's difficult. Residential streets, generally, when they're designed, they're designed to accommodate a thirty mile per hour speed limit. So, they're wide enough for that. To, to go back in retrofit, sometime, well, one, it's very costly depending on what you do. Two, if you make parking on one side legal, but not in front of my house, I can't park, that's illegal. That, that even becomes more and more difficult to control. I, I think to do something like that, it has to be a serious problem.
Which we do.
You would have to address.
How, in comparison, what would be the expense of a pilot program? Enacting an ordinance and putting together a pilot program with the parkers and-
I've got the price. This is not much for the size.
That was mainly pros. And then to answer Mr. Francis's question, is narrowing lanes is a, is an option for traffic calming? Painting a stripe? Your vehicles still cross that stripe, so you'd have to put a barrier of some sort, raised barrier, curb, better vertical delineators, something that's gonna take up one side of the street. Either you do it on the inner, or you do it on the outer, and not park there. So, if it has a golf cart lane or a pedestrian type, right?
Keep them on one side, you've got cars on the other. Visually, if you can see in the distance, yeah, more than likely, they're gonna cross that line. If they see that there are pedestrians in there or cyclists in there, they're going to take their time, they're gonna slow down and be careful not to hit them. It's when they don't see them, is when you get into an altercation with them, right? But the cost of putting signs throughout the community, we've already come up with approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The cost of striping, and this, this isn't gonna be the only street.
We cost it out to strike both sides of Lakeside.
It is.
The seven-foot pedestrian lane, it was in the seventy thousand dollar range.
So, we could effectively two, two one-mile roadways for the same cost of stop signs throughout the community.
And, and on a street of that traffic amount, how long will that last? Three years, five years?
Three to five years.
You say community, you mean that, or you mean the entire city?
I'm saying the entire city.
Make sure we're on the same-
Remington Terrace, that's another, uh, Remington, east and west, that's another one. You've got one stop sign, but essentially, they are straight roadways. And there's cars on either side. But there's, oftentimes, you can hear these gentlemen that own, or ladies that own sports cars, making sure they still run fast. You know? It's everywhere. You hear it on Highland Shore's Boulevard. It's not just, and Selmaire's the same way.
I was just gonna ask a question. Chief, what, what, what's your opinion about?
Well, he's got some data to show us.
Yeah.
I used the, the, the citations and warnings stuff.
But, but I wanna know your opinion.
But it's, it's all encompassing, I think. I, thanks for, thanks for asking, by the way.
Yes, sir.
It is all encompassing, and, you know, if you're- It really, I think it needs a combination approach. But if you're, if you, if you start working on an area or the city, then, then a focused approach on one area. Why I say that as an example, this neighborhood, um, if you just start dropping signs all over a place, changing the speed limits, you have to remember about the feeder streets and all the streets that connect to those things. And the, and the, the confusion, okay, or lack of awareness, which are what you wanna call it, from citizens who come off of one of those side streets, from a thirty-five to a twenty or twenty-five, or vice versa, leaving your street and then entering the fast one. Usually it's the other way around. So, you have to consider, you know, trying to geographically fence that in to, to start moving in that direction. Before that, um, you know, it's collecting the data from the residents too. I mean, is it ten out of three hundred and seventy, or is it three hundred out of three hundred and seventy? Who would say we have a problem? I, I have a master's degree in leadership and management, and, and social psychology talks about perceptions. Perception, your perception and mine are not wrong. It's what we perceive that moment in time that we have a problem. So, what do we focus, or, you know, we're, we're data-driven and, and, and reality-driven with officer numbers and money, writing what we do and what we're doing on a regular basis to, to try to curtail it. So, I'm, I'm lead to this specific narrow approach versus broad stroke, because you, you don't really, you really don't have all of the, the input. And if the citizens want it, and this council wants it, you know, we can do whatever you ask us to do.
Would you, if you were, if you were given the choice right now, would you do a pilot program, or would you pass?
I'd pass. Because of the data and the accidents that we've collected. But again, I'd say, if you think that there's a need to do it, I'm gonna support it, because that's what I get paid to do.
Remember what he said, though. His job is data-driven. We have to take perception into account. That's correct.
But, you know, I would love to see a survey of three hundred and seventy-nine people that live up there, and say, "Would you support lowering the speed limit to twenty-five?" And oh, by the way, the current average speed is twenty-four. I mean, what answer are you gonna get on that?
Wait, 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 wait. Why, then you're leading them into an answer?
Because you gotta give them the data.
I'm right the question. They've seen the data for, they've seen the data for five years.
You say, "Hey, would you support?"
No, the folks that come to the meeting have seen it. Everybody else has no clue.
This, this discussion has been in the paper. I mean, they're, they're being argumentative about-
Everybody else has no clue.
I would, I would- Don't know, we have an election coming-
I would agree, I would agree. Sampling, or I would agree petitioning the people in the neighborhood. But with no leading data, you say, "Would you support? Are you comfortable with the speed limit at thirty, or would you support a reduction in the speed limit to twenty-five? Yes or no?"
That's not, that's not scientific example.
Yes, no is not scientific.
If you did a seven-foot pedestrian lane on one side, would that require no parking on that side and only parking on the, uh, non- pedestrian side? We would recommend no parking on, on the pedestrian lane side. Your data. Oh, any more slides?
I do, yes. I can click can. So, talking about the, the speed limit signs, and to, to do this neighborhood, twenty-nine signs, a hundred and thirty-eight dollars apiece, which was just a little bit over four thousand dollars, I believe. When you look at all the dots, uh, it, it looks like sign pollution. And I, I think, uh, at the beginning, people had certainly noticed that there's twenty-five per, twenty-five mile per hour speed limits in, in the neighborhood, so.
You've got a, you've got a dot. You see, you see where Lakeside and Hillside come together? So, just to the right of that, there's a dot. That's not a street, is it? Because there's a cul-de-sac south of that, or, yeah, south of that. Is that actually a sh, like a street, or is that somebody's driveway where you've got potentially a sign?
So, so Scott, really-
It's a mid-block speed limit sign.
Oh, is it? Oh, is that a speed limit sign?
It's on a lot line.
So, these aren't stop signs?
Those are speed limit signs, yes, yes.
Okay, all right, my bad, nevermind.
So, Scott, it looks like you would have one on, on each of the other streets. You would have a stu, you would have a speed limit sign there.
Institute of Traffic Engineering recommends stop sign at the end of each, each turn radius on to each street, indicating what the speed limit is, and if you exit that street, goes back to the previous station. So, you have to mark every street.
We're not doing that today, though, are we? Because every street is already, is that way.
Ken, next slide. So, just to cover some of the cons, and, and we've probably talked about some of this, some, some people are not gonna like the lower speed limit. Another, the complaint of speed limit signs in the front yard, haven't had one before, and Scott gave me a stop sign in my yard, so. Another one, I think this is important, it, it can create a false sense of security. If you lowered it to twenty-five, all of a sudden, "Is it safe enough for my kids playing in the street?" Certainly, that cannot be the case. And I think part of that is a big education as well, if we did this to, to get that word out. And I might have one more. That's it.
The toughest slide along?
Yeah, questions.
Let's, let's see your data.
You know, and I will mention too quickly, when Flower Mound instituted their twenty-five mile per hour, they did say, "We're gonna do twenty-five in residential, we are not going to step up, uh, patrol and traffic stops." The, so they have not done that. I talked to the town manager a little bit. He said the biggest complaint they've got, of course, was the person who got a, a speed limit sign in their yard. Other than that, it's been generally well-accepted.
What's been the result in terms of driving habits?
He did not get any data back on that, so.
I was going to actually compare it to our stats, trying to show some correlation. It's just, we need a little more time to do that, so. I mean, more discussions, we can draw more data. In this particular instance too, I just wanna say, we'll always address, we just haven't yet addressed that intersection with stop signs, independent on how, what, what direction this went. But if there's no decision made on that, I'm probably gonna bring to the council, my chain, eventually get the request in front of council for that stop, those two stop signs, or, because it's, uh, it is a recognizable safety issue.
And I will say before, before Chief goes over this information, I did lay this out to give, to give you an alternative. We, we talked about it several times. This is a way, if we wanted to take a step into it and try it out, or otherwise, let's just say we're happy at thirty miles per hour.
Did Flower Mound share their success criteria? The deciding, how they measured that success?
No, in fact, he was gonna get back with, just didn't hear back.
No worries, yeah, I was just curious. So, similar, well, some, some areas of the hot map or heat map, excuse me, basically of, of the speeding citations that were over three, three years, thirty of them, in the residential areas.
These are caught.
Correct.
By chance.
Correct. Well, I can say, or, or if we were in an operation, okay?
Was the one on, the, the two on Doubletree, was that the result? Was that actually the result of, or was that that Easter Sunday morning incident?
No, these would be, that we actually stopped people, not be, not because of an accident. So, these were, this was data captured from our ticket riders.
Okay, okay.
So, warnings or citations, was what Sean asked for last time. So, thanks.
And it doesn't include warnings, right?
It will, yes. Here's all the speeding violations in the city over the last three years. On the prime, uh, you can see the major breakdowns of where we get most of our stuff. Uh, this is speeding and, I'm sorry, this is warnings and citations, the next slide will break those down, okay? Oh, that one slide. Okay, residential only is the thirty, and then now you're, the next one gets the big streets, okay? Everything, everything including these thirty, okay? So, residential area basically account, accounts for less than one percent of speeding citations.
I'm gonna guess the majority, I'm gonna guess the majority on Briar Hill, Barnett, and Selma are probably school zone violations?
Yeah, probably. Because we focus intensely on, on problem areas, or areas that people make complaints on. So, when we go up to Village Parkway, I mean, I do not like wasting a resource up on twenty-four ninety-nine, but we have to do that, because people start driving too fast through there. So, we, we rotate through it. It'll be a change by five on that total at the bottom on the next slide, Ken. By five, and at thirty-six seventy-two, why that happened? It's how those reports were run, we're guessing the residential area. And you just got across, but it's off by five from the other slide. This is, these are the numbers that I, I'll say, well, I'm getting in front of everybody with that eighty-five percentile to say, or if you hear, you know, Highland Village is a speed trap, or, "Oh, my God, you better not speed through Highland Village, because you're gonna get taken." Being visible and making the stops, it's the same amount of work for my folks who are operating those ticket riders. And they've, they've, they've wanted in the past to be able to stop you and say, "Hey, there, you need to slow it down, get back in your car and go up, stop another car." But when they're doing it the same way we collect the data, from a, from a warning or a ticket, it's the same amount of time of ass. If I handed you a piece of equipment and someone cumbersome to type in that data, and look up the violation and put it all in there, if it was a warning or a ticket, which way would you leave? If it was a warning or a ticket, which way would you leave? More often than not. Ticket, right? But they're stopping cars like crazy within that ten mile an hour range and slowing people down and show, and, and bringing that data to say, hey, we're really, we're really doing pretty good things here. I hope you understand that with the ticket rider, because it is, it's a, it's a eleven-minute deal to do it either way.
It's just a matter of, on the citation, it's a box, whether it's a ticket or a warning, correct?
Correct. But if you didn't have to use the ticket rider, we're really saying, hey, I'm, I'm just going to give you a verbal warning. They tell, I mean, the, the argument at one time was, Chief, we'd stop a lot of cars. I don't necessarily believe that, but, but we'd stop a lot of, stop a lot of cars. We stop a lot of cars that, that are, that are still speeding, they're just not, not excessive change. Slows cars down, down. We saw the bulk of our work, it's out on, it's not the residential area unless we get complaints.
But that goes back to your earlier point though, you're taking a man off the street and you're already, you're already stretched in staffing. If you, if you make more stops, there is aspirating the problem.
You know, they, yes. There's only so much time in a shift to do things, so. I mean, if you want to look at a comprehensive study on, on, on how many calls for service we have, manpower available for that day versus traffic stops versus the trainings, put all that stuff together, you understand? That's a, I'm very satisfied with those numbers. I hope, and losses too.
Well, I got, I got the impression from your, your conversation, that exact point and, and, and I think we all agree. Arvin's done a great job. You're out there, you're in front of the public, you're stopping, slowing them down, giving them warnings, but you're slowing them down and it's not just that individual that slows down. All the cars that pass by you that are going to slow down because they see the lights, they see an issue, they're going to take it easy. So you're, you're doing a great job. The first thought in my mind is, okay, so we get out there and we're out there more often, but we do that and we're taking people on the streets on calls. But it's, it's a double edged sword here in the direction we need to take.
I'm not opposed to directly there is patrols where we put people in those neighborhoods or problem areas and even paying overtime to bring someone in to do those to cover this, cover the time. Or if we're, I won't say fat, I don't hate using that word in my world, but if we're fat staff that day, we have an additional body, then there's more opportunities for them to do some of those operations also. So the sergeants on the shifts are, are tasked with managing their resources in a shift and the guys and girls here are pretty darn motivated. They do, between all the community service work and the, and the traffic enforcement, which still is community service oriented, you know, they, they do, they do. The numbers I'm seeing from the data are, that we're doing a pretty good job. Not, you know, could we do better? Sure, obviously. But are we doing horribly? No. We're running out of time. There was one question that we probably can't answer. You wanted to put two stop signs on Lakeside at Lake Breeze. I mean, that's, I've heard that on and on. It's both a safety issue, could also be a calming issue. Is that a request for two stop signs?
Sure, I would respectfully request that the stop sign.
I mean, is that something that we could agree with tonight, everyone?
I would. I would, I drove it today twice.
It's a movement in that direction.
And I, and that's really almost halfway and I think that would stop at least at two.
At a slow some.
Yep.
And I don't.
Slow them down around the curve. Slow them down around that curve.
Yeah, slow them down. And then I don't, I don't think that we necessarily have to table the overall discussion because I like the discussion, but are there other calming things that we can look at?
I'd like to hear about, I'd like to hear the numbers from Flowermount.
Yeah. Is it working? But I, I am in favor of putting a stop sign.
I'd support that.
Okay. So we got the stop signs. Anybody opposed? And we'll bring that, we'll bring that for our next council meeting then.
To your point then, I, I.
We do like to, I know the request came in from Matt, what we would like to do within that immediate area for the houses that are surrounded there too, we do knock on the doors. That's probably about thirty houses, thirty residences, just to, just to get a verbal yes or no on what others feel so we can present that data to you all.
I'd like to know what, what the numbers are in Flowermount, like Dan requested.
Kevin, is a stop sign required in ordinance?
I'll dig up the data, try to compare it with everything that we, that I prepared for you already, so that's not new data and you know, resort through it. Try to keep it similar. Thank you, Chief.
Um, I don't know, number two, clarification, does anybody have anything on the, on the interactions, anything you can clarify or?
Uh, just, yeah, I just had clarification on the, on the bank, one property.
Chase.
So Chase Bank. So they're splitting it in half. Is that what I'm getting out of that? They're bu, they're, they're bulldozing the building, they're splitting it in half or they're, they're sectioning it into two.
They're, they're ground, they're ground leasing the west half right now. They don't have a ground lease for the east half, but yes, that's.
So they're going to, intentionally, they want to make two properties out of it.
They're not going to replant it though. They're just going to ground lease individual segments.
Right. That's what I've been holding back up. You know, you may have, if you've seen the, the resolution, I've specifically made sure it's called out that this is not constituted and authorized replant, splitting those into two lots. I've had some issues in other cities where somebody has ground, done something like this, ground leased half, ground leased the other half and all of a sudden, next thing you know, they've sold off one or the other.
So it's, Kevin, it's a complete ground lease on two halves?
No, I think, it's my understanding, just, just on the west half right now.
So the purchasers who are bulldozing and buying the property are essentially, I'm going to say it wrong, splitting it in half with the ground lease on one half for another potential.
Yes.
Okay.
But the breaks plus is going to pay, is going to be the sidewalk all the way through even though it's another piece of property.
That's, yes.
Okay.
That's my understanding, I think that's right.
Anything else? Alright. Obsession during. See you in eight minutes.
Kid just comes and...
Good evening. Welcome to the regular session of the Highland Village City Council. Today is Tuesday, April the 11th, and the meeting is called to order at 7:04 PM. Let the record show all council members are present. Please join Councilmember Feaster in leading us in the prayer and the pledge.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for our families, our health, our safety, and the many other blessings you bestowed upon us. As we gather here tonight, we pray for your wisdom and guidance as we consider this evening's agenda. May we continue to serve in good faith towards each other and represent the best of our community's interests. We ask that you continue to watch over our city staff, our first responders, and see them safely home to their families at the end of their day. We pray you watch over and protect our military personnel at home and abroad and keep them safe as they selflessly serve to protect us. In your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, sir. Next, we'll move on to mayor and council reports. Pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0415, the city council may report on the following items: expression of thanks, congratulations or condolences, information about holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders about upcoming city council events, information about community events, and announcements involving imminent threat to public health and safety. Does anything, anybody have anything they want to report?
I do.
Go ahead.
All right, so as everybody knows, seven, the 17th Annual McAuliffe Chili Cook-Off was held on March 30th. I'd like to congratulate Chief Rime and his wife Debbie for winning Outstanding Chili as well as winning the best theme for their booth. So basically bringing home two trophies, as well as Mayor Jaworski bringing home the mayor's trophy as well.
Which has still not arrived.
Which hasn't arrived.
Mayor France in Flower Mound, you owe me a trophy.
I'd also like to give a big thanks to the men and women of our police auxiliary, as well as Marcus High School ROTC for their hard work directing traffic. We had thousands of people that arrived there. McAuliffe isn't a big area. It's a very tight street on Briar Hill, so it was no easy feat, and I just want to make sure that, you know, I say thanks and, you know, indicate that these guys did a fantastic job that night.
Anyone else? I got, I've got one. Marcus High School's girls soccer team is going to the state tournament in Georgetown. They've made the final four. They leave, they'll leave town on Thursday morning, and the way I understand it, the bus will leave Marcus High School about 9:35 and will arrive at Heritage Elementary School shortly after that. They'll do a turnaround in the cul-de-sac down there and then head over to Briar Hill McAuliffe area and do a, do a quick trip around there on their way out of town. The schools are participating in the send-off. They'll send the kids out to wave at them and holler at them and who, and, and push them on to win state. So residents, I think, I think you're probably encouraged if you want to come out on the side of the road and, and wave to them, honk your horn as the bus drives by or whatever. Let's send the girls off to state in a, in a good way. Hopefully they'll bring back some hardware. I think that was it for me. Mr. Stevens, you got anything?
I do. I was asking at the last meeting about the status of the Highland Village Road on ramped Interstate 35. Most everything is complete. There appears to be a drainage, a drainage and a grading issue. They think early May it will be open, though.
All right. A 71-day project, that's about 171 days.
That's correct.
Let's see, I've got a couple of proclamations I've got to give out, so let me pull those out here. The first one we'll do, let me get Mrs. Worthington and Mrs. Russell from United Way of Denton and Cook Children's, and then after that, we'll do one for Casa, and we'll have Lorraine Perry and Carol Simmons. Let me make sure I get these right. That one's different. Okay. If y'all want to meet me at the podium.
They're already there. They're waiting for you.
Yeah, I know, right? They're waiting on me. Okay. Just trying to get organized. Angie offered to hold these for me, and I said, "No, I've got it." All right, so for United Way, this is for Mental Health Month. Whichever of you wants to hold the, I'll give you both, so that's my copy. There's that one. And that one. So I'll read this copy out loud. Whereas the citizens of Denton County value their overall health and that of their families and fellow citizens and are proud to support observances such as Mental Health Month, and whereas the need for comprehensive coordinated mental health services for men, women, and children places upon our community a critical responsibility, and whereas it is appropriate that a month should be set apart each year to direct our thoughts toward mental health education and the support and treatment, or the support of treatment and recovery, and whereas the Denton County Behavioral Health Leadership Team, Denton County MHMR Center, United Way of Denton County, and the Wellness Alliance for Total Children's Health of Denton County, led by Cook Children's, through their unique partnership and prevention-based approaches to serving children and adolescents, are effectively addressing the mental health needs of children, youth, and families in our community, and whereas each citizen, local business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, and faith-based organization shares the burden of mental health concerns and has a responsibility to promote mental, mental wellness, recovery, and support prevention efforts. Now therefore I, Daniel Jaworski, Mayor of the City of Highland Village, do hereby proclaim May 20, May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month, and May 10th, 2023, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in the City of Highland Village.
Can I have a response?
Sure, go ahead.
Mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. One in five adults will experience a mental illness in a given year. This is 167,242 residents in Denton County. Additionally, one in five adolescents have or will have a serious mental health illness. But there is hope. Mental health illnesses both are common and treatable. We appreciate the City of Highland Village for helping us increase awareness of mental health conditions and resources as part of Mental Health Awareness Month. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. It's, mental health is something that's important in my family. My mother suffered from mental health issues, and then, and she could have benefited from the services y'all provide.
Thank you so much.
Make sure I hide the folder.
Thank you.
Thank you again. All right, next up, let me have Mrs. Simmons and Mrs. Perry come up. Is it just you, Lorraine? Okay. We'll keep this one in. And give you, this is yours. Okay. That's your copy? All right, so, whereas child abuse and neglect is a complex and ongoing problem in our society, and child victims of abuse and neglect need and deserve support and assistance to help them cope with the tragedies in their young lives, and whereas in 2022, Denton County Child Protective Services received 7,134 reports of child abuse that were assigned to caseworkers, and whereas in 2022, Denton County Child Protective Services had an average of 322 children in its protective custody, and whereas Denton County has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to counter the problem of child maltreatment and to help parents obtain the assistance they need, and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, and law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and whereas National Child Abuse Prevention Month offers us all the opportunity to promote and support programs that offer protection and safety for our, our community's children, now therefore I, Daniel Jaworski, Mayor of the City of Highland Village, in honor of all children in Denton County, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Highland Village.
This is for you.
Oh, thank you. Do you want to, do you want to speak? Okay. Battery's going dead. All right. Podium's yours. State your name and give your address, too, for the record. Just kidding.
I am Lorraine, I'm Lorraine Perry, a member of Child Protective Services Board and a member of Community Partners of Denton County, and both organizations work to support our foster children. And right now, we are in dire need of foster care parents. We have children, have had children for the last two years, that we've had to provide hotel rooms, and our CPS workers are having to work 24 hours a day, round the clock, because these children are in hotels, and we don't like that. We want families to come out and try to support our kids and provide a home if they can for these children. So that's my plea, is that we get more foster parents in our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. Give her a hug. Tell Gretchen I gave you a hug. All right, next on the agenda is city manager and staff reports. Does the city manager have anything else?
I jumped the gun a while ago, so I guess that's all I've got.
Yeah. You jumped through work session, too, because that's always a late work session item.
Oh, yeah.
All right, I think we have a village report.
Join us at the Shops at Highland Village on May 6th for the 2023 Highland Village Art Festival. This year, we will have over 30 booths featuring gallery-quality artists and interactive art activities for the kids. The event begins at 10:00 AM and runs through 6:00 PM, so there is plenty of time to visit all the booths, grab a bite to eat at one of the mini restaurants, and enjoy the live music and entertainment. With so much art and the variety of styles, you are bound to find that perfect piece that speaks to you. So come out May 6th at the shops to see the creative works of art from our local artists. Early voting for city council and LISD Board of Trustees candidates begins on April 24th and ends May 2nd. Highland Village City Hall will be a polling location, and during early voting, registered voters can vote at any polling location in Denton County. To find the most convenient location for you, visit votedenton.gov. There you can find a lot of good information, such as a sample ballot and a map of polling locations in Denton County. On Election Day, voters must vote at their assigned precinct. It's spring cleaning time, and that means paper shredding day. The Magic Shred Truck will be at Pilot Knoll Park on April 29th from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Mobile onsite paper shredding ensures that all discarded information is protected from unauthorized use, eliminating the possibility of fraud or identity theft. This event is free and for Highland Village residents only. Business shredding is not allowed. Please have your ID to present at the gatehouse.
All right, next item on the agenda would normally be public comments, but I don't think we have any, correct? So we'll move on to consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and a vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from the, from the agenda so that it may be considered separately and/or adding any item from this action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. Consent agenda items include number 10, consider approval of minutes of the regular city council meeting held on March 28, 2023. Consider, number 11, consider resolution 2023-3054, delegating the authority to release and abandon certain easements previously conveyed and/or dedicated to the city by plat or separate instrument under certain conditions. Number 12, consider resolution 2023-3055, authorizing the city manager to sign a revised agreement of lease with the United States Army Corps of Engineers relating to federal land leased for Copper's Branch Park, Lakeside Community Park, Wichita Forest Park, Pilot Knoll Park, and portions of Doubletree Ranch Park. Number 13, consider resolution 2023-3056, rejecting all bids for the Highland Shore's Well Rehabilitation Project. Number 14, considering resolution 2023-3057, rejecting all bids for the Lake Vista Well Rehabilitation Project. And number 15, receive budget reports for period ending February 28, 2023. Is there any discussion needed for any of the agenda items included on consent? Mr. Feaster, I think you had one?
Yes, I do. I would like, I guess, to just discuss items 13 and 14. Mr. Kristin, I don't know if we have to...
Pull them from consent.
We need to pull them from consent, just to ask for clar, okay. So you want to pull those and put them on action?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Okay, Dan. I also, I had a note to do, ask for clarification on 11, and I got sidetracked by the breaks plus discussion, so I'd like to pull that, so we can discuss that as well.
Okay, so 11, 13, and 14, we want to move from consent to action. Do we need a, a motion to move those, or?
No, just go ahead and... Pull them and just go ahead and approve consent with the remaining items.
Okay. All right, so would anybody like to make a motion to approve consent agenda items 10, 12, and 15?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve consent agenda items 12, excuse me, 10, 12, and 15, as read.
All right, we've got a first, a motion by Mr. Feaster, or do you need a second? A second by Mayor Protem. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So moving on to action agenda, we'll bounce back to number 11. That's consider resolution 2023-3054, delegating the authority to release and abandon certain easements previously conveyed and/or dedicated to the city by plat or separate instrument under certain conditions. Mr. Lombardo, I think you had a question?
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I should have mentioned this in...
That's fine.
...in early session. I, I just want to get an explanation of exactly how we're going to use this, because I'm not sure that we necessarily want to give up or hand that power to the city manager if it has any type of bearing on anything. Not that I don't trust the city manager, I think he's a great guy.
No. Let me, what... Legally, the city council's the only, unless it's delegated the authority, has, is the only body that has the authority to convey or release a property interest, such as an easement. We often run into situations where we have a plat that's pending, where, or maybe a possibly replat relating to develop, redevelopment of a piece of property that maybe had some old easements on it that won't be needed or may actually impede development as the property redevelops. Because the Planning Zoning Commission has final authority to approve plats, if you're going to abandon an easement, you can't, I mean, historically, a lot of cities would just abandon them, say by plat. Well, when, if, if the city council's approving it, the, approving plats, that's not a problem. The Planning Zoning Commission itself does not have the authority to release a property right that the city holds. That's the city council. However, you can delegate that authority to the city manager, and this resolution does so in certain circumstances, basically to make sure that, you know, one, it's a, it's an easement that's not needed, not likely to be needed in the future because of the nature of the development of the property, and it requires that it be done with a note on the plat showing that this authorization is limited based on this delegation. And, you know, the Public Works Director, City Engineer have looked at it to verify that it's not needed, and it goes through the process of requiring, you know, there's, if there's utilities in it, we can't do it unless we get consent of the utilities. I mean, there's all sorts of very limiting conditions, so it's not just a carte blanche, you know, authority that's being granted.
Because I wanted to get an understanding of, you know, where's the limit draw?
Yeah. The limit's drawn, I mean, it's pretty much like you would in any development situation where, you know, I mean, Public Works will, you know, and, and City Engineers will go through and looking at plat, they'll already routinely check, verify utilities, and if there's any utilities in there, you know, check and see if those utility companies own, who, public folks who own utilities are okay with the release. A lot of times, you know, if it's a city utility or even other, you know, third-party utilities, you know, that release is not going to happen until after, you know, if anybody actually has to relocate it after a new easement's been done. I mean, that's just part of the routine of, of making sure the utilities are protected. So it's not, again, it's, it's, it's very limiting, a lot of conditions are tied to it, but basically it just takes a rather timely, you know, time-consuming step out of the process of, for development, is what it amounts to.
And let me ask you this, and if you can just get the, you know, an estimate, how often would this needed have been done in the past year, let's say? Just throwing something out there.
We did, we did one at Bowery Park, I believe.
Yeah, we've been some at Bowery Park. We've done, I mean, over the years, I bet we've done, you know, had to do 10, 12, 15, you know, probably more than that, you know, when, because what frequently will happen, we had to do some at, I think, what's, what's the new development on the west side, or first, Chapel Hill? Yeah, the old LISD property.
Oh.
We had to do some there when Wichita Forest, Wichita Forest was done, you know, that, that development. We came back, they redid some lots because of some drainage issues, we had to go and do it then. We had to bring those, rather than going through the replating process, simply the replating process at PNC, they actually had to come back and get, you know, quite a few easements re-vacated as they dedicated new ones to replace those during the course of that development. It's mostly tied to plats. Now, every once in a while, it'll be situations like properties that have older plats where they've got five-to-10-foot utility easements in the back where there's no utilities and never going to be any utilities, but somebody's wanted to build a pool or a backyard kitchen, and while they would comply with setbacks, it, it would impugn, it would encroach into those easements if they built it how they wanted to build it. But those easements may never get, be used. So there's another situation where you can kind of use it in those situations, too, and not have to bring, because we've been having to bring those to council.
Right. Okay, so my question is how, and guys, you know, what do you guys think? Has it been that detrimental that you had to add an extra 30-day process for it to get on an agenda, or is it even, you know, it'd have to be 30 days to get on an agenda to slow it down? I mean, is it, I mean, has something not happened or caused anybody detrimental harm?
It's largely slowed it down, the process down because of it, and it just seems, it's a tool we've used, I've used in a couple of other cities, again, for similar reasons to where we've got situations where, where the Planning Zoning Commission has, you know, has the final authority on plats, and that's usually where it comes up.
Okay.
Well, the thing is, as, as you go through, beginning with redevelopment more and more, particularly in some of your, your non-residential areas, you know, you may, you may see this more and more needed in the future. Again, is there a huge volume of them? No, but it's enough that kind of just takes a...
I mean, did something happen that decided, that triggered you guys to say, "Hey, maybe we should change this"?
Actually, yes. We've got a, well, yeah, the site plan, that's one site plan that's on the agenda for tonight. There's an old access easement along the frontage next to Barnett that's not needed anymore because it was established back when the school was built, but nothing else was there. And there was an access easement that was dedicated. Well, there's now a street and sidewalks, or sidewalks in the process of being constructed as those, the rest of those properties developing. We would have to bring that, and that kind of... We would have to bring that, and that kind of, you know, crays a problem with how they lay out the site, particularly trying to keep it closer towards Barnett rather than towards the back of the property.
But we're going to fix whatever issue that is right here tonight if we approve that plat, correct?
Well, they haven't done the plat yet.
Oh, okay.
That's the whole thing. They've got a site plan, but they've got, they've still got to come forward with the plat, and this would be, this affects the plat.
Kevin, all you're talking about here is easements that really don't impact-
That's correct.
Yeah, so it's, I don't see any reason to bring it to our attention. I mean, yeah, it doesn't make any sense to do so, so.
All right, so-
Do we need to make a motion on that?
Okay. I'm good. You guys are, no, you guys are good, I'll do it then.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 11, consider resolution 2023-3054.
Got a motion by Mayor Protem Lombardo, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fierenza, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number 13, consider resolution 2023-3056, rejecting all bids for the Howland Shores Well Rehabilitation Project. Mr. Feaster, you had a question?
Yeah, just a couple questions, Mr. Kristin. So we bid this out, we only got one qualified bid back, maybe just one bid. We're asking to reject those and rebid this. What are the conditions where we only received one bid the first time? What's the expectation that we would get multiple bids the second time? And how does this impact the coming summer months with peak water demand?
Mayor, council, Mr. Feaster, staff budgeted for this project $300,000 this year, and with COVID and supply chain issues, we put it out to bid, we received one bid. There's multiple companies out there, I don't, I don't know why we only received one bid, but the bid we did receive is double our budget, so we're in sticker shock right now. We calculate that the well has only got a 12% yield decrease right now, which is just under 100,000 gallons a day. We can make it through the summer peak with it as is, and then budget the correct amount or the anticipated amount in the FY '24 budget, and then get it out to multiple bidders, and hopefully receive at least three bids.
Okay. That's all I had.
Want to make a motion?
Did I hear you correctly, sorry?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Did I hear you correctly when you said that the 12% reduction in capacity on the wells is all we're seeing right now?
Yes.
What is the anticipation during the next 12 months for the capacity of those wells?
Maybe another percent, possibly.
It's not, we're not in detriment?
No. The well pumps, well impellers, degrade over time, five-to-eight-year timeframe where you have to take them down, rebuild them to gain your capacity back.
And we're just, this is just one well, we've got two?
We've got five.
Total?
Yeah.
And when will those come up?
We do have them programmed over, in the budget in outlying years. I believe, well, the Lake Vista well rehab was actually scheduled for FY '24, but it is, it is failed right now, so we would basically swap these two is what we're asking.
But that's not going to affect our capacity needs and the ability to service them?
No, we should be able to have Lake Vista back up by the July, August peak.
If we get bids that mirror the one we have now, that's going to be in the next year's budget?
Correct.
And subsequent years as well?
Yes, we'll have to do some adjusting in outlying years.
Are you, in the subsequent years, are you going to show percentage increases for inflation or anything?
We always show-
Adjust for those, or we go through this again?
Right, we always show a 3%, a 5% increase in subsequent years moving forward. With the way the economy is now, we might have to relook at that and adjust accordingly.
The anticipation, though, this will give us a good idea for the next couple of years?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Just one question. You say you were in sticker shock. In the breakdown of the bids versus the breakdown of your estimates, is there one or two items that just jump off the page, like the cost of a new pump, or?
It's the metal.
Just across the board?
Yeah.
What's the motor?
Metal column pipe, impellers are metal, it's-
Steel prices.
Steel, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Feaster?
I was just going to make a motion, we're done.
Anything further?
Can you do a motion on both of them?
I think we have to do them separately, right?
Yeah.
Week new bells?
Yeah.
So you did say, before we do that, just to clarify on number 14, the Lake Vista well, you did say that that well has actually failed, correct?
That well has failed, and we would put it immediately back out to bid and seek more bidders.
Okay, all right. Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make it since I pulled it. I'll make the motion that we approve resolution 2023-3056 and resolution 2023-3057.
Okay.
I'll second.
Mr. Heslop with a second. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We did not meet in closed session, so there is no action on number 16. Number 17 is consider resolution 2023-3058, approving a detailed site plan for lot 3B of the Barnett subdivision known as 105 Barnett Boulevard, the Bo Hyun, I probably didn't pronounce that right, so forgive me, Temple and Zen Center. Mr. Kristin?
Thank you, Mayor, council. The city has received an application for a site plan to construct an approximately 5900-square-foot building, the Buion Temple and Zen Center at the 105 Barnett site. The property is currently zoned as SF40, single-family residential. However, churches and places of religious worship are allowed in all zone districts unless it's prohibited in a PD. And the proposed site plan, you will see Building 1 parking and future buildings with future parking. Right now, the plan is, in this site plan, is only to construct Phase 1, which is the one building in the parking area along Barnett. It does include a sidewalk along the Barnett frontage. We did work this item with P&amp;Z, and they voted to move this item forward to council with a 5-0 vote, with one exception. Each commercial site is required to have a masonry screening wall. However, along the east side of this site, it backs up to residential properties which have existing wood fences, and there's also an existing 35-foot utility drainage easement in there with buried, live, buried infrastructure located in it. So if we made them put the screening wall up, it would be within that easement, possibly on top of buried live water, wastewater, or storm sewer infrastructure. So Public Works is not recommending adding that screening wall. We can take a look at the screening wall during Phase 2, which will be another site
So P&amp;Z's addition to their recommendation was to waive screen wall?
Right, there is a resolution tied to this that, in their recommendation, does waive the requirement for the screening, the masonry screening.
For this particular phase?
Yes.
But it's open for the additional ones when they come back?
Right, they would have to do a site plan amendment if they, when they get ready to do Phase 2.
It's not permanent? Permanent, it's for further discussion, essentially.
New site plan, updated tree plan, landscape plan for Phase 2.
The trees that they're going to be removing and the replacement trees, is there, from what I saw in the plan, where the, where the masonry wall would have been built, on the south segment of that eastern border, is not a dense population of trees?
Correct.
And that's really where the detention pond's going to go?
Right.
My concern is that, in the discussion, it shows that the, there is a six-foot fence from the property owners on the east of them.
Right.
For the most part, I think every one of them had a six-foot fence. There's also a bunch of trees, especially on the northern part of that plot of land that buffer it, and the buff, that tree buffer gave credence to the lack of requirement for the fence. We don't have that tree buffer on the southern portion of that eastern border.
Right.
In the current easement that's back there, which would be on the eastern side of the detention pond, can we require them to put trees in there? Is that going to affect our easement?
We would not recommend putting trees that would mature to a trunk caliper of greater than four inches inside an easement with active-
Because of the easement. Is there any other buffer that we could use?
You can use ornamental buffers, crepe myrtle, smaller trees, Japanese maples would be an example.
Yeah.
Something that doesn't have a mature caliper of greater than four inches-
Deep root system.
At a four-foot height.
Mm-hmm.
Because if we do have to go in and excavate, you know, for safety, we take them out.
Right. More for discussion than is anything, and consistency across the eastern portion of the land, because you do have an open area that's going to be looking into. But from what I see, the secondary buildings are going to be close to the primary, and from what I understand, that back portion of the land or the eastern portion of that land is going to remain green space, is that correct?
And that's what it's showing.
And there's no further phases that they anticipate putting forward in the future?
None that we discussed.
Right.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Fierenza, what I had asked you before, Mr. Kristin, in the email, was the tree removal plan shows proposed grading that is going all the way through this site, and if you can look at your screen, there's about four feet of grade that they're using to get down to existing, and there's about 50 trees existing that would have to be removed due to those grading activities. That would significantly thin out the tree coverage on this property in a future phase. Is that proposed to be done? So none of that grading that's shown on this plan is being proposed for this phase?
Right, anything that is, is on the eastern side is going to be part of Phase 2, which would be addressed at that time.
So we're not requiring them to put the detention pond in now?
The detention in the area is regional, so they would drain into the southern side. Part of the property drains to the southern side, and then part of the property drains to the northeast corner, which goes to the LISD property detention facility.
And you see no issue, issue requiring that detention pond at this point in time?
Both of those retention ponds are regional, and they've been accounted for in this acreage.
Very good.
There is a detention pond on the southern, southeast corner?
Yes.
Somewhat of a detention pond, is that what I'm gathering?
It's a, it's an overgrown detention pond-
But it's been there since the property-
Built with the rambling oaks development. Of course, the ownership has changed and long gone. It is in a drainage easement, so the city has reluctantly taken ownership of that, and we have identified it in the future CIP that's unfunded at the time, but it's identified in future CIP to bring that detention facility back to the design.
They start with anticipation of starting development, let's say, within the next six months. The activity, the construction activities and everything that's going to go on there, will the current capacity of that pond withstand any anticipated outflows until we have the opportunity to approve a budget to get in there and maintain the bond?
Right. With the open properties that are in the area not developed yet, there's, there's a lot of capacity left in that.
Open, there's only one between that and the Alzheimer's.
You got, yeah, there's one, I don't know how many acres it is, it's an L-shaped property to the, to the south, and then you have the-
That's right, because it comes back out on that main street.
-most of the property directly across the street on Barnett. It drains that way.
But it does drain back to the west?
It's surface drains there now.
Okay. Okay.
A large portion of it. There's a, there's a small, small triangle piece of acreage on that empty property that drains to the school.
Bottom line is, the development of this property is not going to significantly enhance any drainage units, any drainage issues. So therefore, it's null and void at this point until they decide to build Phase 2, correct?
It's a non-issue right now, until Phase 2 develops and all the other properties develop, and if the city has not been funded-
And then all this comes, Phase 2 comes back, and it comes back for approval again?
Yes, sir.
Correct. Okay. Is there anything in our ordinance that would require the property owner to replace any trees that are damaged by construction or natural causes in time? That buffer on the east side or anything on the property, really, if a tree dies, what's to keep this property owner from just letting it stay and doing nothing, no replacement?
If, what the city has is a, it's labeled a tree mitigation plan, but what it really is, is a tree replacement plan if a tree is removed illegally, not in the building footprint, not in an easement footprint, not required by the zoning ordinance for the foundation plantings or a parking lot, you have to have so many trees added. If it's just a tree that's out in the open, untouched property, no, we don't have a means for replacement of that. If it gets damaged in construction, it'll be noted by the inspectors, and yeah, we will bring it up.
And that's my concern, that we don't have anything currently, I think, on a lot of the developments along 407. As the trees die or the grass dies, there's nothing to force them to replace them.
Right.
And it becomes a barren piece of property, which, which concerns me when you don't require a buffering wall. Right now, we're using natural space, and I prefer the natural space, obviously, so would the homeowners against it. But if those trees die for whatever reason, there's nothing to keep them from, there's no way we can go back and make them put a fence in either, a wall in either, at that point.
And we still wouldn't recommend it then because of the existing easement, but we also have, you know, the property maintenance code for, you know, landscape that dies away, and they could get a code letter to either mitigate it, replace it, you know, however they want to. Once a tree on a private property is not owned or regulated by the city, it's, it's the property owner's tree to do with as they please.
Right. But when we put in a development, we require them to put in a certain amount of landscaping?
50% foundation plantings and a tree every, I think it's 10 spaces, parking spaces or 14, I can't remember.
Okay. The other question I had was, when the Phase 2 comes to us, whenever that might be, what is the, what is the anticipation for parking? Are they taking the east side of this lot, or are they going to, how are they going to manage the parking at that point?
Along the south.
Preliminary drawings that we've seen, it's on the south side.
All along through that circular area that's presented?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
The member's time has expired.
Go ahead, then, I'll come back. No, it's all right, go.
I just have one follow-up, just my original question. I just want to make absolutely sure that I'm clear, that when this comes back for a Phase 2, at that time, we could require them to install a masonry wall or some other screen along that eastern property. Is that correct?
Yes.
We would have that-
It's an amendment.
-ability to, we're not foregoing that right now by approving this. Okay.
Is this a site plan?
I just want to be clear, because once they put a fire lane in and they grade it, there's going to be no trees on that south half of that property.
Right.
Which is going to very much change the conversation on screening. So is it possible to have a bermed wall in the utility easement with ornamentals on top of that or something vegetative rather than masonry?
We have that now, and we would take a look at the-
Okay.
We have that now, and we would take a look at the, the condition and the depth of, of the existing infrastructure to see if it would be able to handle the weight, any additional weight, but, yeah. And when Phase Two comes through, it would be an amended site plan, so we would go through the same process.
Well, I understand. I guess I just want to be clear that, you know, we're not grandfathering in no wall in the future just because we're approving it now, so, for whatever that council is.
Yeah, just to make sure we're clear, the Section 2C of the resolution calls out that it only applies to the detailed site plan to the extent it's in the form that it is on this ord, on this resolution. I intentionally drafted that provision to say, say it's only this resolution, and that when you come back for an amended, then a special exception regarding the screen and will be, can be relooked at and amended, so in anticipation of the issue you're talking about. Okay.
Anybody else?
I believe so. You might want to clarify.
I don't know if anybody's going to go. I'll ask another one. The dumpster enclosure. So Highland Village City Code allows the dumpster enclosure to be in the front yard of the property. Is that correct? There's no recommendation for it to be in the side yard or a rear yard, not visible from the street?
No, as long, it's, as long as it's enclosed.
And it has, doesn't have to be planted around, screened?
Yes, sir.
It does? Okay.
Gated, high enough walls to screen it.
But it can be in the front yard?
Yes.
Okay. That was it.
Anybody else? Entertainer motion?
I'll make a motion. Well, I'll let Tom make a motion today. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan as present.
All right. Mr. Hustle makes a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kix Miller is the second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Please. Number 18, consider Resolution 2023-3059 approving a detailed site plan for Lot 1AR, Block A of the Nelson Properties Edition, known as 2370 Justin Road. Mr. Kristin.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. City has received an application seeking approval of a site plan to construct an approximate 4,900-square-foot building for operation of a Brakes Plus business on a six, on a .62-acre portion of Lot 1AR, Block A, Nelson Properties Edition. It's currently the old Chase Bank site, which is addressed as 2370 Justin Road. This proposal would add the Brakes Plus as an address of 2374 Justin Road, and I believe we discussed this a little earlier. This site is, is one lot. However, the property owner is leasing it to two, proposing to lease it to two entities to build two structures through a meets and bounds lease, is that right, Kevin?
Yeah, through meets and bounds, please.
However, at this time, this is a site plan just for the, the western side. We have not received anything for the east side proposal as of yet. The bank will be demolished, the Brakes Plus lease will only lease the western portion of the property. There is a proposed sidewalk along the FM 407 frontage with this, even though it is not completely on the leased property. Compliance to the non-residential overlay ordinance, look and feel, is our base comprehensive zoning ordinance for this property. The applicant has taken into consideration parking spaces that is outside of his lease space, and will work with the, the other property leasing to comply with all needed The existing, or the, the proposed exterior of the building is a brick and stucco landscaping. Some of the landscaping on the old bank building will be removed. It's minor, it's eight crepe myrtles and, and one oak tree will be replanted with the additional trees and landscaping as part of the plan. 50% foundation plannings as required by ordinance.
Right.
The monument sign along FM 407 frontage would be a shared monument sign with the Brakes Plus and the future proposed other leasing. The building signage require, or the building signage per ordinance, they're only allowed one sign per road frontage. They, this building with front 407, they did ask planning and zoning for three signs. The one on the south elevation that fronts 407, one on the west elevation that would, that would face the, the restaurant, and one on the east elevation, which would face the Walgreens site. Planning and zoning did take out the sign request for the east side elevation. However, do have two resolutions tonight, depending on how the council wants to lean, either add in the third requested sign or keep it removed. It's up to you. City staff, engineers, and fire department have reviewed the application and are all in agreeance. I do have the, the representing engineer here tonight for the site. If you have any additional questions, but planning and zoning did recommend 5.0 to move this item forward minus the east elevation signage.
Mr. Fe, Mr. Hustle had his light on first.
Yeah. Scott, is this, do we know, is this a franchisee or a corporate store?
I'll defer to Mr. Mathias on that question.
Oh, property owner's here.
Good afternoon. John Davis with Brakes Plus, 1880 South Park Drive, Birmingham, Alabama. It's a corporate.
It's a corporate store.
Corporate, yeah.
Dogs. And then second question, who's Victory Shops of Highland Village?
Regal.
Who's Victory Shops of Highland Village?
The landlord. Landlord.
So they're the current owner of the property?
They're the current owner.
So you guys are going to do the ground lease?
That's correct. We will build the building, we, we will operate it, and we're just leasing the property from that.
99-year?
I think it's a, like, 30-some-odd year.
Okay.
35, maybe.
Okay. All right.
Question. Does P&amp;Z say why they eliminated the east-facing sign?
John, I did not attend the planning and zoning meeting, so I, I can't answer that question.
I mean, not, not knowing what might be next door, I mean, it's, it's kind of like.
Possibly.
And there's a lot of trees in there that'll be maintained, so.
It could be. The zoning ordinance allows one. They asked for three. I don't know if they thought they were overstepping their boundary or, or what have you.
I don't have a problem with the three.
Mr. Feister.
Looking at the plans, I think I know the answer. I just want to confirm. So in essence, after demolition is complete, the, it's basically going to be a pad-ready site for the vacant space next to it, right? The fire lane's going to be maintained all the way throughout, curb and gutter.
Correct.
Just parking, they're just scraping the building away and moving.
Correct.
Okay. I also don't have an issue with a third sign. I mean, if something does get built to block it, it comes down, right? It's not serving a purpose, but that visibility along 407 there is pretty critical, I would think, for them, monument sign as well. So I would, I would be in favor of allowing a third sign, but, you know, that's it.
Question I had, what you said about the trees, the crepe myrtles and an oak that would be, the term you used was replaced?
They're going to take down eight crepe myrtles and replace it with an oak.
Okay. And then you said there's an existing oak that would go away as well?
Uh, no.
Okay. Just want to make sure I heard that right.
Scott, the proposed sidewalk.
Yes.
What I saw, it looks like on the west side, coming off the land, is a four-foot, and the east side is a five-foot. What does a current plan, comprehensive plan, ask for in that area if we were to put a sidewalk in? I think that when we talked, when we had a discussion, we were looking at multimodal opportunities here. Does the four-foot and the five-foot meet the existing?
It does not meet the existing comprehensive plan. However, we were already working this item prior to the comprehensive plan being approved. I think what would, what was in the comprehensive plan to go through there is either eight or a 10-foot trail system, which is compliant with Texas DOT Pro-WAG cross-section for their, for their roads now, which is, they basically put a trail system on either side of their roads.
What is the, what is the width of the sidewalk that continues west in front of the restaurant?
In front of, it's a five-foot in front of Fresco, I think it's Fresco's, isn't it?
Lost Colony.
Lost Colony.
Would we not want to keep that a five-foot coming to this property and all the way across it then?
We would, we would submit a five-foot to Texas DOT, yeah.
So we would require this, this contractor to put in a five-foot?
Yeah.
Minimum?
Yeah.
Okay. And the, I have a different opinion on the sign. I understand why they, why they see the need for it. When I, when I look at the consistency along 407, there are, there are, all of them have both monument signs along 407. The Just Brakes has two signs, one on the west, one on the front, and they're in a similar situation. They have a piece of property just to the west of them, then the road. This, in, in this case, will be a property, a property just on the east of them, and then the road. So I don't see where the two frontages, although I understand their argument. I don't have a problem with two, one on the west, one on the front. I don't see a need for the one on the east, given the location of this particular property, the sightline, especially with the size of the sign that they're going to put on the front of the building. I, I don't, I don't know that the third sign's really unnecessary. I would, I would vote against having that third sign on there.
So just to be clear, it's, on, on the renderings, there's two signs on the building and then a sign out front. Is that the three, or are we talking a third sign on the east side in addition to the other two and the monument sign?
Right. And the packet you have is what the Planning and Zoning Commission approved, which is the monument sign, which is allowed, the frontage sign on the building, which is allowed, and then the additional western.
So the additional one would be on the flat facade that's colored tan, I guess?
On the east.
Yes. And on the east elevation.
Right.
So that's a monument sign?
That would be on the building.
Wall sign, correct?
Correct. It's the same.
Two of the three are wall signs, and then there's the one that's in the ground, correct?
Right. It would be, it would be the same proposed sign on the east side as it was on, as it is on the front.
It's two wall signs versus three wall signs. Right. Walgreens has two wall signs.
Originally, it was three elevation signs, and then they managed for that particular bus.
In addition to the monument sign out front.
Everybody else is, we've required only two signs on, no more than two on the buildings. You're allowing this one building to have three signs on it.
Well, actually, Walgreens has technically three signs.
Walgreens has two.
There's one on each wall, and there's the one that's in the ground as well. So we're looking.
Yes, but on the building. Let's talk about the building, right?
Right. That's what I'm saying. Walgreens has two on the building.
Right. That's right. Two. And this would have two unless we allow them to have three. So they would have an additional sign than any other business on 407 in our community.
All right. That's where I'm confused. Are they asking for three wall signs?
Yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to clarify.
That's an option. They, they asked for three.
It's one first street frontage per elevation. There's, there's actually arguably two street frontages affecting this property, so they get two, and it's per tenant, by the way. So there's only one tenant, two arguably street frontages, there's not three street frontages, so you can't get that third one unless you get a special exception.
Which is what they're asking for.
Correct.
All right, let's reset. They're asking for three signs on the building itself, on three sides of the building.
Correct.
And the ordinance only allows one, right?
No.
One for a street frontage. So they have, they're on a corner lot, they have two street frontages, so they're allowed two.
Okay. And then the sign that's in, and then the, the sign that's in the ground.
Yes. A monument sign is also allowed by.
Okay.
So as the resolution is currently written, is, would it be approving two signs on the building, one monument sign?
Mm-hmm.
That's what was approved by planning and zoning, correct?
So there's two, there's two copies of the resolution. There's one that, that takes planning and zoning's recommendation.
Got it, okay.
Which is the two. Or if we decide to waive their recommendation and approve it with three, there's, there's a, there's a copy of the resolution that allows it.
Right. There is, yeah, there is. Just in the.
So in the motion, in the, in whatever motion that is entertained, you'd have to specify.
Right. The, yeah, just so you'll understand, know a little bit about the alternate resolution, the one that includes a special exception regarding the third sign.
Hearthstone.
We've, in language, to basically revisit that a little bit, should there, should at some point in the future, that building not be used for Brakes Plus as in its entirety, but would at some point be subdivided and the building become multiple tenants? Because we've got, because it, the, the ordinance reads it's, it's per street frontage per tenant in a building. Well, right now, we only have one tenant, so that would have to revisit if this should, sign should ever be repurposed to a different use and that building become multiple, multi-tenant. So we've kind of tried to protect against six or seven signs ending up there at some future date, should there be a different use with more than one tenant, in case that should happen. But otherwise, the special exception language would be in the alternate, is in the alternate resolution.
And each, each of those signs is lit, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Feister?
Yeah, so as an aside, do we have any indication from the property owner on what could possibly go adjacent to the Brakes Plus? Because, and where I'll go with that is if, if the buildings would align along the frontage of each building, that sign on the east side is probably not going to do any good with another building right next to it, unless, you know, I guess you, possible a drive-through could get through there, small one perhaps, but I'm not sure, I'm not to use the mayor's expression, it's not a hill I'll die on for that third sign. So I'm wishy-washy, but, you know, I, I think as soon as they put a coffee house or something right next to it, that third sign is just shining right in the window of the, their neighbor. So I don't, you know, I hate to backtrack, but I'll, I'll backtrack here.
Anything further?
Strategic retreat.
Anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the.
Which one?
As presented by, by planning and zoning.
As presented?
As presented by planning and zoning, which is the clarification, please?
Two signs on the building and the monument, correct?
Special exception on signs, correct.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Fearenz has made a motion that, that includes planning and zoning's recommendation on signage. I'll second. Mr. Hustle, seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Just when you thought we were done, no, we're not. Item number 19, consider Resolution 2023-3060 authorizing an application to the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department recreational boating access grant program for the Pilot Knoll Park redevelopment project, Phase One. Mr. Lozano.
Let's talk parks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we have another grant application here, and the background is the same as far as the certificate of obligation bonds. Of that 6.4 million is allocated for parks. In this situation, $620,000 is allocated for major improvements on the boat ramp at Pilot Knoll Park, and the city is seeking grants from the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department to help with the funding of the boat ramp and dock improvements. The Texas Parks and Wildlife Department Boating Access Grant Program assists local grant agencies in developing, I'm sorry, there says trails, but it should say, does yours say trails?
Yes.
It does. It's supposed to, a little typo there, say boating access throughout the state. The. The program provides a 75% match grants on reimbursement based on eligible applications. And the city will be responsible for 25% of the project's total cost. The matching maximum amount is 250K for the planning. We don't anticipate using that, but up to $1 million for construction. And the resolution is for the planning grant of Phase One. And what this does, when we, in this particular grant, we're allowed to phase it out. So we're going to design beyond what we need, knowing that we're going to be coming back. And what that does is it tees us up with Texas Parks and Wildlife Department for future asks. And that's a good thing. And that's what we want to do. So we're going to have several phases with this boating grant over the next several years. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay. So staff sought the assistance from a professional grant writer to help with the Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant for the Boating Access Grant. And then we apply and submit a copy of the executed resolution along with other documents, including the assurance document for the Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant by May 1st of 2023. So this resolution will satisfy Texas Parks and Wildlife requirements as two of the required documents for grant submission. And a resolution has been drafted for consideration, and staff has gathered additional required documents in preparation for the grant submission. So we're asking for a recommendation to, or recommending to approve Resolution 2023-3060. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Counsel?
I have one. What do you think the probability of getting approved for this grant is?
It's pretty good. A lot of discussions with Texas Parks and Wildlife, especially after the cabin, not making that through. Probably had over the course of 60 days, maybe four to five conversations about the different grants and making sure that we understand what's expected. And what has happened, from what I understand, is they've changed the scoring criteria and they've adopted the National Parks Association criteria. The money that the Texas receives is federal money. So that scoring criteria, what it was two years ago, has changed. So we're learning that, and so is our grant writer. So we're spending a lot of time with Texas Parks and Wildlife. Kevin can attest to that because I've, he's, I've forwarded emails to him, basically stating that the resolutions that we have is written, Texas Parks and Wildlife will approve. So we're, I'm doing a lot of front-end work to make sure that we're teed up and we're looking good moving forward.
Is your grant writer a graduate of Stephen F. Austin State University, home of the mighty lumberjacks?
No, I don't know.
I think he's an Aggie.
Oh. I don't know. We have a pretty good forestry program down there.
Either way.
State University, no? No, it's still State University. I don't know if it's been voted on.
I think this question goes to Kevin. And it's just a clarification. I know the agenda item, the subject matter regarding the grant, but as Phil pointed out, there's a typo in the body of the, of the agenda item. When it says trails, and we're talking about the, we're talking about the Pilot Knoll Park. Is that really, is that going to make a difference?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Typer is just in the background.
Right. That's what, but I want to make sure that we're not going to have an issue moving forward.
The resolution doesn't have the typo?
No.
Yeah, the resolution, I think, is fine.
Just the background.
Oh, it was, no, as long as, A, as long as the agenda posting is fine, as long as the resolution.
The subject matter.
I'm not worried about the agenda briefing.
Okay. All right.
No, we're good.
Mr. Lozano, assuming we're successful in being awarded funds by the state, what does that obligate us to and what's the timeline of that obligation?
We have four years, I believe, moving forward once on the award date. So this application process does not go towards the award date. When we get awarded, the due date is May 1st. The award date is to be determined. They haven't updated the website. I just checked it. So we have four years to complete the project. We have three years of work up to the project prior to the award date that is eligible for reimbursement. So the grant writers' cost and any architect fees and things like that that we have done leading up to the grant, and that's eligible for three years. So we're sitting pretty good. So it's a nice window. It's a good window.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any matching funds? We've already got in the bond issue.
Yes, sir. We do.
Anyone else? Entertainer motion?
I'd like to make a motion. We approve Resolution 2023-3060 authorizing the grant application, Texas Parks and Wildlife.
All right. Motion by Mr. Feaster. Does anybody second?
I'll second.
Second by Mayor Protim. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Item number 20, late work session. Does anybody have any status reports or projects or discussions for future agenda items?
I do have one question. Is Scott still here? Paul, do you have any update on the 35 access northbound?
That's what I did mention earlier. There's a grading and drainage issue that they've got to deal with first. So they do believe in early May that that will be fully complete and open.
Thank you. Just repeat from last one. Flashpad opens when?
September 1.
And it's all done? I know we got, that's six weeks away, so we got time.
We are substantially complete with the fence. We're hoping to finish it up this week.
Okay. No, that's, no hurry it and wait. It's good.
Yep.
We saw pictures of it, so I mean, it's.
Have you been out there yet?
No, I haven't looked at it personally, but I will.
Okay. It looks awesome. And we also did the playground surfacing as well. So that's looking really good as well. Yeah.
And you got rid of all those nasty rocks.
Which ones?
In the.
Oh, yes. They're all gone. Yep. For sure. Looks great.
All right, last call. We are adjourned at 8:16.